Okay, good morning. I'd like to call this committee a whole meeting to order. We're dispensing now with these long announcements we used to read. So we can get right into it, the second meeting after the summer break. The first item is council announcements. Any anyone in the committee have an announcement? Counselor Silvitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everybody, online and in chambers. I just have a couple of announcements. First of all, I would like to congratulate Glamina Betancourt once again for organizing an incredibly successful Terry Fox Run in the Park at Oakville, at Oakridges. And she raised over $20,000 this time, and it's a marvelous. We had an excellent time. Thank you to members of council for attending our MPs and MPPs. It was a really fantastic day, and we'll do it again next year. There's no longer a Mopon Run. It's all together now in one at Oakridges. So it's Richmond Hill, Oakridges, Terry Fox Run. So congratulations, Glamina, and to all the volunteers who helped out. You were remarkable. The other, a couple of other announcements I have. Saturday, I am hosting Pride in the Park, which is to be held at the Amos Wright Park at 19 Church Street North in Ward Two. Please come and join us between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m. as we celebrate our diversity and inclusion and our remarkable LGBTQ2S+ communities. Today, there are marches across York Region, across the GTA, H.A., and across Ontario, across Canada, in support of our LGBTQ2S+ brothers and sisters. And we need to definitively show them our allyship because it's becoming more and more necessary as unfortunately, more and we see more and more of governments and individuals moving to the far right. And they are, they not only are problematic for everybody, but they are specifically problematic for our LGBTQ2S+ brothers, sisters, friends, and family. So if you can join one of the marches today, just look online and go ahead and show your pride. And I just want to wish everybody well over the fast, all our Jewish residents. Sunday night is Yom Kippur, the holiest day in the Jewish calendar, and to everyone, Shana Tova, and well over the fast. And think about when we fast, it's called the Day of Atonement, where we think about the previous year and everything that has happened and how we pray for a better year for this year. So for '57, '84, and 2023, 2024, we should definitely all be praying for better. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is Counselor Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this Sunday, September 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. is the Ward Three Electronic Waste and Clothing Collection Day. So I'd like to thank staff for arranging the parking lot for me. And this is used to be an annual event, but this is the first time after the COVID. So I hope to see everybody there, drop off your unwanted electronics and clothings. Yeah, it's for free. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, through you, Chair. I'd just like to make note on this past Sunday, Deputy Mayor Chan and myself had the pleasure of being able to attend St. Matthew's United Church, who became an affirming ministry on Sunday. They are now a voice that support the people of all sexualities and gender identities and that they, you know, people of vulnerable nature have a much safer and sacred space, you know, to go to as part of the affirming ministry program. So just wanted to make comment about that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. This Saturday, there are going to be a Green Belt Rally hosted in Richmond Hill Green Park from 1:00 p.m. Anyone wants to support this event, please join us. Also, on Sunday, 7:00 a.m., we're going to have a round for Water 6K Kalimser Running for supporting the water for Africa. 7:00 a.m. in Wilcox Lake, if you want to join as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselors have an announcement? Okay. I don't see any. So I too just would just want to extend thanks and congratulations to the organizers of the Oakridges Richmond Hill Terry Fox Run. It was very successful, and it gets more well-attended every year. It's 43 years in the running, and you know, it's just great to see that. They've got, you know, excellent scenery for the walk in our Lake Wilcox Park. And they do some great work and raise money for that very important cause. Okay, so we'll get back to our meetings. Any member of committee have an introduction of emergency or time-sensitive matter? I don't see any. So we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Mayor West? Any discussion on that? I see none. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Here is unanimously. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I see none. Okay. And now we move to identifying items that require separate discussion. Does anyone want to pull any of the items on today's agenda? Oh, I thought we could have had a quick one. Okay, Counselor Chu.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to pull out 11.6 for separate discussion. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Chan?
11.2, Mr. Chair. 11.2 on pending items this.
11.2 and 11.6. Okay, would you like to move the staff recommendations? Oh, one second. No. Counselor Davidson, you want to move all the staff recommendations in the items with the exception of 11.6 and 11.2? Great, thank you. And we have a presentation on 11.1, so that'll remain as part of the agenda. Mr. Clerk, do we remove the staff recommendations there? If council consents, we include 11.1 in the motion? We adopt those recommendations? Well, I'm going to leave it out. We'll leave it out because there may be discussion resulting from the presentation. Okay, so Counselor Davidson moves 11.3, 11.4, 11.5, 11.7, the staff recommendations in those items, and then, of course, the member motions will be discussed. So that's the motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Here is unanimously. Okay. Very good. So we've adopted the remainder of the items. We have no public hearings, and we moved to that presentation. So this is a lengthy presentation that's going to come from Lisa Conde, our manager of Strategic and Government Relations, and Stacy Husson from Strategy Corp regarding the Consultation Summary Report for the 2023 to 2027 Strategic Plan. So a very important plan, core and central to everything we do. This plan will form the basis for all of council's activities this term. It will provide us direction and inform decisions, excuse me, for our transportation, communications, finance, everything we do, a very important process that, you know, that's beginning and involves a lot of engagement with our public and consultation with residents of Richmond Hill. So I'd like to call Lisa Conde forward to begin that presentation.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Chair and members of council, I'm here to give you a very brief introduction to a presentation that takes you through the summary report of the consultation done over the past few months as part of the development of our strategic plan. In 2023, council approved funding to develop a new strategic plan to set out the vision, mission, values, and goals to guide decision-making for the next five years. It's important in any context of constraint to have clarity on our goals, to help the city focus and align on our priorities, to achieve the things that are most important to the community. We hired Strategy Corp, a leader in supporting municipal strategic planning, in April of this year to help us do background research, prepare a consultation strategy, and execute that consultation over the summer, summarizing it here with the report before you today. Briefly today, briefly, sorry, today you will hear from Stacy Husson from Strategy Corp in terms of next steps as outlined in the recommendations of the staff report. We will publish this report for further feedback from the public while we begin to write the new strategic plan for council's consideration anticipated before the end of this year. So with that, I will turn it over to Stacy.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to present the findings of all of the engagement that our team has conducted along with your staff over the last several months. So if we could just move to the next slide, we don't have a ton of time. I could certainly fill an hour, but in the interest of being brief, I just want to give you a little bit of context about the project that we undertook, outline how and who we engaged as part of our work over the last couple of months, and really focus on what we heard. What are the key insights that, you know, we think should be considered as staff start to draft the strategic plan for council's consideration? If we can move to the next slide, and if we can go straight to the next one. As Lee said, we were engaged in April 2023, and we started our work with a background study, researching best practices in municipal strategic planning, but also in community engagement, as probably all of, you know, none of you are probably surprised to hear this, but engagement has changed since the pandemic. And so we wanted to make sure that the tactics and tools that we were using were in line with leading practices at this moment. You know, the next phase of our work involved synthesizing all of that research and coming up with a communications and engagement plan that we then, and we keep saying this, but we executed it, but maybe the better word is we implemented it, where we went out to the community and also engaged with council and staff. And the point of all of this is to make sure that the city has the inputs that it needs to draft and, you know, approve a strategic plan that is appropriately reflective of the community's needs, their wants, and their aspirations. And so that's what we're here to talk about today. If we can just move to the next slide, please. Strategic planning can often seem a bit far removed from what you usually do every day, which is approve specific policy items or decisions as council. Strategic planning kind of operates up here at a higher level, where you're thinking about, you know, what are the things that are most important to the community? How can you prioritize when you think about the fact that municipalities have something like 150 lines of business? How do you decide where and when to invest? And, you know, what outcomes you'd like to achieve? Your strategic plan can provide that roadmap as you start to think about how to make those choices. It also communicates to the public your vision for the future and how you're going to work to deliver on the priorities and the things that matter the most to them. It's also important for staff so that staff know what council's direction is. It informs what they do every day. And you'll hear me say this probably more than once in the short time that we have, but if everything's a priority, then nothing's really a priority. And so your strategic plan is that overarching guiding document that will feed into everything you do, the business plans and the departmental work plans, and also the budget. The budget is critical to actually implementing the strategic plan. It's like an accelerator pedal. Through the budget, you can go faster, you could do more, but you could also ease off and say, we're going to focus here instead of doing this. So it's a really important document, and this is just the first stage in the development of the strategic plan. So if we could move to the next slide, you know, this is the rough timeline. We did spend most of the summer engaging with folks, including yourselves. In August, we spent time actually pulling together everything we heard into the report that's before you. And then, of course, the next phase is I disappear and my team disappears, and Lee's and her team have the lofty task of putting it all back together, bit like a puzzle, right, in terms of what your strategic plan will look like. So if we can just move to Slide 8, please, the next one. We engaged with a range of stakeholders from, you know, residents and other community members, representatives from community organizations, you know, folks from your business community, indigenous treaty rights holders and urban indigenous groups, and of course, the city writ large, council, all of you. You'll probably recall the interviews that we had, I believe, back in May, which feels like a long time ago. We also did workshops and spoke with members of the executive leadership team and departmental staff. So this was a really well-rounded engagement. One of the most interesting things and most valuable things we did was we engaged with the committees of council because that's a good opportunity to have focused discussions on specific issues, whether it's accessibility or affordable housing, age-friendliness, an age-friendly community. And so that was a great opportunity to not only hear more from members of council, but also the representatives that sit on those committees. We can move to the next slide. You know, the city staff, with some of our advice, launched a very comprehensive communications effort that really ranged from digital communications to print media and billboards. And so, you know, all of that was led by city staff, but there was a lot of effort and intentionality to make sure that we were getting the word out about the opportunities to engage in this process. And if we can move to the next slide, I think, you know, the most important part of our engagement is that we didn't rely on one single method to capture feedback. We conducted interviews. We conducted workshops. You know, we had pre-engagement sessions with groups who may often be marginalized or, you know, not as often engaged in these types of processes, to actually ask them, how would you like us to engage you? What engagement tactics would work for you in the community that you work with? We had surveys available online with paper copies as well, but most meaningfully were the pop-ups that we held in the community. And the rationale for that is we went out to where people were already going to be. It reduces barriers to participation, like time and convenience, because they were already attending some of these events that we were at. So examples include that the Canada Day celebration, and if we can move to the next slide, you can see some of these, but the Canada Day celebration and concerts in the park. And, you know, in this day and age, when people are constantly being asked for their to provide input, whether it's on an official plan or another municipal process, it's important to make it as easy and seamless for them to participate as possible. And so that's what we feel we achieved with those community pop-ups, where we would set up a booth and have informal conversations with folks. That's often the way to get the most meaningful feedback. So over the course of the summer, we held 27 different engagement events, and we heard from over 1,300 voices. And that includes about 400 staff of the city of Richmond Hill and approximately, or just over, you know, 900 community members. We can move to Slide 13. So in terms of what we heard, you know, I want to be clear that our approach to analyzing all of the inputs we received throughout the process was an integrated approach. So we have not relied on any single input, whether that be a survey or one open house or one community pop-up, that we took everything we heard, synthesized and aggregated it, whether it was quantitative or qualitative, to come up with the themes that we and insights that we share on the later slides. So in terms of jumping onto that, we, jumping into that, sorry, we organized what we heard into three key buckets. The first are the strengths of Richmond Hill that should be built upon. And one of the reasons we always ask people, and you all might remember this from the interviews we had, but what do you like about Richmond Hill? What's working well? One of the reasons we ask about that is because a strategic plan should also focus on those things that are currently working well or are effective. It actually takes work to make sure that your strengths continue to be your strengths. And so with that in mind, you know, we did, we did ask all stakeholders about that, and some of the key strengths that came out were the, you know, number one, the natural environment of Richmond Hill, and in particular, its green spaces. You've already heard about some of the events that took place over the weekend in some of these spaces, like Lake Wilcox Park. And it's clear that these are critical to Richmond Hill's sense of place and sense of identity, and safeguarding these areas will be important as the city, like so many municipalities, continues to grow and face the impacts of growth. We also heard a lot about the city's location as strategic and deeply connected, whether it's to Toronto, other, you know, municipalities, New York region, but also north from where I came today, actually. Its central location is seen as key to some of those economic opportunities. And if we could just move to the next slide. Sorry about that. And then, you know, another, and we also heard in terms of connectivity, that this is an opportunity for the future that is only going to grow with the expansion of the subway north. We heard as well that people in Richmond Hill, they love the events, and I think the opening remarks this morning showed a bit of that, all about the fabulous events that are either put on or supported by the city and its community partners. And there's a sense that this is an area where Richmond Hill excels in its programming around recreation and culture, but also in the events that really bring people out and foster that sense of belonging. The other, you know, another strength is that Richmond Hill is a diverse and innovative city. It's known as a welcoming city, inclusive and diverse, and there's a sense that this diversity is itself a value that helps drive the administration and the community forward, that, you know, you're constantly looking at new opportunities, thanks to the different folks within this community who bring things forward. And if we can move to the next slide, please. We heard that Richmond Hill is largely a safe city. It's an urban city, but it's also, you know, still has that small-town feel, and that this, I think, is going to be something that the city is going to need to continue to think about as we move forward. I've described it before as a big, a small town with big-city amenities, and we know that that's one of the things that the community enjoys about Richmond Hill, is the intimacy of living here, but also having everything you need at, you know, and they're not too far away from where you live. We also heard, you know, that the city right now is fiscally prudent. It's on a fairly sound financial path, but anybody that reads the news and listens to, you know, the current challenges around inflation and interest rates knows that it takes work to make sure that you maintain that prudent fiscal path. And moving forward, one of the things that council will need to grapple with is, you know, balancing affordability for residents through user fees or the tax base with, you know, the community's wants around new investments and continuing to maintain quality of life. I also would like to call out the, what we heard about the council-staff relationship. We heard very positive things, and, you know, as someone who does this every day, I can say that that's not the case everywhere. And so it does deserve, you know, being called out because you want to make sure that that continues to be the case. We heard that council and staff work collaboratively together, that there's mutual respect there, and that everyone is aligned on trying to serve in the best interest of the community. If we can just move to the next slide. We also asked folks about, you know, what's maybe not working so well? What are some of those areas of opportunity that you think Richmond Hill should address or plan for as part of the strategic plan? The first, and probably the number one thing we heard about was, you know, the need to build consensus around the city's growth and what that growth looks like in the future. There's a divergence of perspectives. Some people are excited about the growth and the potential opportunity that comes with growth, and others are worried that it threatens, you know, everything that I just talked about, that, or that small-town feel and that intimacy of living here, as well as risk to the green spaces that are so beloved. Balancing growth and green was a 2020 council priority, and it remains a top priority. But I think now it's actually figuring out, what do we mean when we say to balance green and growth? And I think that's the task probably for this term of council. We heard as well on growth that communities, it's not just about having more housing. It's not just about, you know, having more buildings, but it's about making sure those communities are complete, that they're surrounded with amenities, and that, you know, it has that community feel so that you can live somewhere and you can walk to a shop or get your groceries or even walk to work. And this is an opportunity for your staff, who are already doing great work, to think about, you know, urban design opportunities, to make sure that you're not just building homes or buildings, but you're building communities. We heard quite a bit about the historic downtown core, and, you know, there's a concern that maybe we need to think about how to revitalize that, and there's a concern as well that, you know, members of the community may be going to other historic villages because, you know, their councils have maybe invested more in those to make them more of an attraction or a destination. That said, we heard that community members are divided, for example, on whether or not to move the city hall there, that they're not sure on the return on investment. Another, you know, area of improvement that we heard was around supporting your older adults, and we know that there's great work underway to build an age-friendly community. So that'll be an ongoing process in making sure that, you know, your older adults and the seniors who live here, who have lived here for a generation, that they can stay here and that they can age in place. Community members are concerned about their, the ability of older adults to find homes that suit their needs, to be able to move around the city safely, and other issues as well. If we can move to the next slide, too. That would be great. On mobility, we heard that moving around is not always easy. I can confirm, as someone who drove through the city earlier this morning, you know, we heard that traffic and congestion remains a top concern. It's frustrating for residents, and we heard that this may also be having an adverse impact on, you know, safety for all road users, that pedestrians maybe don't feel very safe because of the speeds and because of the frustration of drivers. We also heard that, you know, there may not be equitable access to mobility around the city. Seniors have a hard time moving around if they can't drive. And there's also an increasing demand for, you know, other mobility options, active transportation, safer sidewalks, separated cycling paths, all opportunities to think about as you continue to grow. We did hear as well of a continuing desire to advance truth and reconciliation and foster strong relationships with, you know, indigenous peoples and, you know, Richmond Hill's urban indigenous group as well. And of course, you know, one of the pieces of so much of what I'm telling you today is it's not all within your control. So we heard about the need for advocacy with other levels of government, about the need for a continued focus on potential partnerships and innovative solutions to tackling some of these challenges. You know, you have limits to what you can directly invest in, deliver, regulate as an area of municipality. Some of what we've talked about already today aren't necessarily your challenges alone. And so a continued focus on advocacy will be important moving forward. We can just move to the next slide here. That would be great. In terms of other opportunities for improvement, we heard that the strategic plan is itself an opportunity for improvement. You know, the strategic plan is a way to build alignment within the organization about those priorities. Lee's touched on that, and I've said it already, if everything's a priority, then nothing is. And staff seek greater clarity about what the priorities are and what the direction council wants to go in looks like. And so the strategic plan is a key tool in building that alignment. Moving forward as well, you know, to deliver on any of the things in your forthcoming strategic plan, you need staff to do it, and you need people and the processes to do it. And so, you know, one of the things that we heard about is that recruitment and retention of staff, municipal staff are top of mind. There's challenges in the sector, and so, like so many other places, again, that I've participated in these processes over the last several years, this is top of mind across the sector, so it's probably going to be top of mind for you, too, moving forward, to make sure that you're that employer of choice. to make sure that you're that employer of choice. We also heard about, you know, the opportunity to continue to improve how you engage through communications and, you know, other opportunities for public participation. And not only that, but also making sure that it's easy for residents to engage with local government, whether that's through events or even how they access services, digital services, for example. How can we foster those strong relationships between the community you serve and the services that you provide? The third bucket of things, and if we can move to the next slide, is around those macro level challenges that, you know, I just spoke about. These are the things that are not your responsibility alone to tackle, but certainly are top of mind for your residents. And the first one includes, you know, the, the erosion of, of what we've called social civility and trust in government. And this is, again, not Richmond Hill specific. This is at all levels of government. And you can see it with the low voter turnout experienced in, you know, all of the elections since, over the last two years. And municipalities in particular face challenges in educating and communicating with residents. How do you get people to come out in a moment of engagement fatigue? When, as I've said, they're being asked to provide their opinion constantly on all types of issues. And so transparency, accountability, communications are all going to be critical in rebuilding those bridges between government and the people it serves. And again, this is not something that's specific to Richmond Hill, but it is something we heard about. The other one, you know, the other macro level challenge is of course, the unpredictable legislative changes that can come from other levels of government. Some of these may be positive and are exciting opportunities for the city. Others may, you know, threaten some of your plans and things that you were, uh, you know, going to do. And so you need to make sure that you have that, uh, flexibility and that adaptability to be able to, dare I say pivot when required. Because again, the other levels of government certainly have a role to play in how you govern. If we can move to the next slide. In terms of, you know, managing the big picture, we also heard about climate change. We heard that the city is doing some important work, that there are plans and targets in place. But I think it's much easier to develop a plan than it is to implement a plan. And a lot of these, you know, climate change adaptation or mitigation plans have significant dollars and capacity required in order to actually deliver on the goals within them. And so this is just something to keep in mind. We also heard about, you know, the uncertain economic landscape that seems to be changing every day. And of course, this has direct implications for you as a municipality. You know, you're seeing it as higher borrowing rates, increased construction costs. It costs you more this year to deliver the exact same services that you did last year without any service enhancements. And of course, these affordability challenges aren't just being felt at the municipal level, but also at the community level where residents are struggling to put food on the table or to pay their mortgages or to pay their rents. So again, this is an area where as you think about what you want in your strategic plan and how you want to prioritize, you need to balance those big ideas and aspirations with what you feel residents can, can pay and what they're, what they will bear. So these affordability challenges can strike on two levels. And the, the, I don't want to say last, but it is last on the slide, is the issue of housing supply and affordability. And what we heard here in Richmond Hill is nuanced compared to what my team has heard in other municipalities. We heard that, you know, it's not a top concern for some because they're quite satisfied with the housing situation that they have today, that they're happy in their homes, they can afford their homes. But we did hear that many are concerned about affordability for other folks, for newcomers, for young people, really for that next generation. One of the most common themes we heard was when talking to folks is that they weren't worried about their housing. They were worried about their children being able to buy a home and stay in Richmond Hill. And there's a concern that, you know, if, if this isn't addressed, that housing costs may deter people from coming here to live or from staying here. And so then they'll take their talent, their skills, their creativity, all of that diversity that I said, you know, feeds into making this a great place to live. They'll take that to another community. And so it's a bit more nuanced than in other places because there are many here who are able and, and satisfied with their, their housing at present. But there's also a concern that the situation is unstable and that this could change the, the feel and the fabric of the city, especially as you continue to grow. If we can just move to the next, uh, slide and then the one after that, thank you. So based on what we heard, we developed 13 kind of high level recommendations for the city's consideration as it moves from talking to people about their priorities to actually putting those priorities onto paper in the form of a draft strategic, strategic plan. And the reason that we provided these recommendations is this is really a distillation of everything that I've just said. These are the kind of top themes, the top insights that came out that I think, you know, warrant consideration as the city starts actually putting that pen to paper. And thinking about these recommendations will help ensure that the plan is reflective of, but also responsive to community needs. That's why you're doing this and that's why we've, we engaged for three months with folks was to hear from them. And so you want to make sure that the strategic plan that you end up with is responsive to what we heard. But I have a, you know, I'm, we're not going to be playing a role in the drafting, but of course I do offer some guidance and consideration as you move into this next phase. And that is on the need to prioritize. We've talked about it a couple of times, both Lee's and I. And although what you'll see, and if you had a chance to read the report, you'll probably think to yourself, well, we're already doing a lot of this stuff. And it's true, Richmond Hill is on the right track. You, you have a great community and you have a great administration, but it will take work when you think about some of those macro level challenges to make sure that you can continue on the straight and narrow. And many of these recommendations reflect some of those broader challenges that are impacting municipalities across Ontario. But addressing some of these big issues will require sustained effort and you may need to make choices about where and how to invest because you can't do everything and you can't be all things to all people. And so the next phase of the strategic plan starts to map out what that list of priorities could look like. But against this, you'll want to balance what's possible because we don't want you to be left with a strategic plan that is so aspirational that it doesn't reflect the organizational realities, whether that's staff capacity or whether that's the funding you have available to you to implement. And so, you know, staff are going to work on this with you over the next phase. But again, this is about prioritizing at the end of the day because you can't do everything. And it ultimately, that prioritization and the discussion that you'll be having over the next while will help determine what's in the plan and what's not. Ultimately, your strategic plan is your document that lets you say yes to things, seize those opportunities, to move things forward. But as I like to remind folks, it's also your document that can empower you to say no, whether that's to, to your community members or you see a, a post, a Facebook post or a social media post, and maybe you think we should do something about this. There needs to be that alignment and we need to make sure that you have a plan. That's not to say that the plan will be set in stone and, you know, you're handcuffed to it. Any good plan knows that, you know, it doesn't survive the first 15 minutes of battle. So you want to make sure that you have that flexibility. But it is important for everyone to be aligned on what is our vision for the future? And what are those milestones on that path to realizing that future vision? So if we could just, uh, move through the, to the next slide. In terms of the recommendations, the first one is building that consensus on growth. You know, I think that that is the number one issue that we heard about is that tension around how to grow. The second is to continue to encourage housing affordability and supply, mindful that much of that is out of your direct control. And so that will require collaboration with, with the provincial and federal governments. And I know that there's been some, you know, as recent as Friday, an announcement to that effect, which is wonderful. And so this is really something that you'll need to continue to do moving forward. And of course, as you think about growth and housing, it's a focus on your natural environment and protecting those assets, those green assets that are critical to, as I said, Richmond Hill's sense of place. It's why people want to live here, it's why they like living here. And with that, of course, as you think about how to preserve your and enhance your green spaces is making sure that the city is able to withstand and be resilient against the impacts of climate change. And as I've said, there's work underway, but it's expensive and it's lofty. And so continuing to, to keep that in mind will be important. If we can move to the next slide. A focus on mobility, make it easier and safer for people to move around the city. And, you know, the sentences are a bit glib, right? It's, oh, well, I'll just make it safer, that's easy, or make it, you know, get rid of congestion. But I think what we heard is that there's a desire to look at opportunities to improve mobility in step with improving accessibility and active transportation as well, so that everyone can get to where they need to go in one piece and as quickly as possible. We also heard about, you know, you'll recall the focus on event, cultural and rec events and programming, and that the city should continue to, to make sure that they're keeping step with the demand for this where they can. The next one is around building trust with the community. Again, a fairly glib statement, but an important priority when you think about uh, how central communications and engagement is to fostering that two-way dialogue between government and its constituents. If we can move to the next slide. Advancing truth and reconciliation, there's lots of good work underway. And, you know, again, your strategic plan doesn't and shouldn't be all new things. It can also be your license to focus on good work that you're already doing and building that capacity to, to continue to move some of these priorities forward. And truth and reconciliation is one of them. You recently adopted a land acknowledgement. And so I think you've, you're taking some important steps and there may be other opportunities to explore in the future. A focus on financial sustainability, again, trying to find that balance between affordability for residents, along with all of the things that this strategic plan is going to have in it that, you know, don't come with zero dollars. Focusing on your people, remembering that, you know, critical to the success of, of the, of the city and the community are your staff, making sure that you have the people you need with the right skillset, the right experience. And also making sure that, you know, as your staff team move on or retire, that you have that pipeline within the organization to ensure seamless service delivery for residents and knowledge transfer as well. And the last, the last couple of recommendations, um, to continue to focus on advocacy. Again, a lot of what I've said today are things that are not solely within your jurisdiction to, to change or to address. And so making sure that you have a robust advocacy strategy that supports both your staff, but also all of you, uh, all of you members of council to, to work with your partners at the other levels of government to make sure that you are best able to address the needs of the community, whether that be challenges around community safety and wellbeing, cost of living, um, and housing, uh, as well as healthcare, um, and access to healthcare professionals and services. Continuing to, you know, advance DEI. I think we just heard earlier this morning about the, you know, the city wanting to make a very clear statement on where it stands and being an inclusive, welcoming community. And I think there's a sense that, that, that should be part of your strategic plan as well. Build on the work that's underway, but also advance, you know, the strategy that you have within the organization. Lead, lead by example, as we put it here. And the last is to continue to provide exceptional customer service to not, this is something you do every day, but it is critical to the reason for a municipality's existence to serve the residents that rely on it and to make sure that decisions are accountable and transparent moving forward. So in terms of, you know, the next step, if we can just move two slides down. As Lee said, this report will be posted for public comment and then city staff will begin drafting the strategic plan. And I would just like to end by thanking all of council, thanking staff, and also thanking the community for their engagement throughout this process. It was a fantastic process and I think you have a very positive path ahead of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hushen. Very, very, uh, well, well presented and, and right on time. Thank you very much. So membership committee, um, this is not the time where we're going to, um, debate or discuss components of the, of the strategic plan. You know, it's such a broad topic, we could, we could get all off on all sorts of tangents. I just want to, I want to make sure we're, we're staying focused here. So we have, uh, our staff recommending just, just receipt, uh, that of the consultation summary. Uh, that's preferred to staff and then it's posted on our website for further consultation with our residents. So, uh, we've got, uh, a, a consultation summary report, uh, that we've just received. And, um, I'm going to bring forward, I, I, item 11.1, because it is the next item and the first item on our agenda. We're, we're going to start there, but I, I just ask that you limit your questions to the process by which a strategy corp gained the, gained their information, their data analysis and, and, uh, you know, maybe the advisability of getting, going out to the public, uh, with that October 12th deadline. So, uh, just, just try and keep it focused and we're going to start off with Mayor West.
Thank you very much. I would be happy to, to move that motion at this time. Stacy, thank you. That was a really outstanding presentation. Uh, I, I just want to start by saying that, um, I, I, there's a slight little bit of nostalgia going on in my brain at the moment. The 2008, nine, um, strategic plan was such an inspiring, uh, document for me personally and probably one of the reasons that when I saw the final result and the process that we went through and the citizen voices that went into our previous strategic plan, it started to really spur that I really wanted to be a part of that in a, a bigger way. Um, and, you know, I, it was very inspiring. And I find this process right now is a, is a continuation and an evolution of what we heard in 2008. And it's interesting because some of the issues that we heard in 2008, you know, are, are maybe not quite as big a deal at the, you know, so many years later, but there's a number of issues now that we weren't talking about in 2008 that are. I, I just wanted to make a couple of high level comments and I agree that this with, uh, the chair, that this is, um, not the time to get down in the weeds. As a matter of fact, this, this document is what the weeds are built on. So, you know, I think we need to stay high level here, but, um, for the most part, everything you've said is this, is the kinds of things that I hear from the community as well. And I, I'm not surprised by any of what you've heard or what you've presented. Uh, this is the community that we live in and I think it's very well reflected in, in that document. And this document will serve us well, as you said, for, you know, prioritizing some of the things that we need to do, you know, on a daily basis and make decisions and, and commit resources and so on. So I think that's important. I just wanted to, um, uh, talk a couple, just reiterate a couple of things that you've said. I think that, uh, the, the inclusive and safe comments that you made, I mean, that's just foundational in all that we do. The diversity, equity and inclusion strategy that we're embarking on, I think is really exciting. And as you said, a lot of the work that we're, are planning to do is consistent with what this strategic plan is, is saying. I think, you know, one of the things that I've been seeing a lot, you talked about the erosion of civility and, and the maybe le- less trust in government as a whole that we've, you know, used to have. The civility thing really concerns me and I, I think this is something we need to concentrate on even more so perhaps than what we've talked about in today's, um, presentation. Because I really think, you know, we're, we're, I remember, you know, a couple of years ago, we went through a process where we decided whether we were a city or a town, and that's fine, we're a city now. But at the end of the day, we're still a community. And I think if you drill down, um, getting to know your neighbors, celebrating your diversity, you know, dispensing with some of the, the racism and the hate and the, and the lack of trust of your fellow citizens in the community really needs to be addressed. Not just here in Richmond Hill by any stretch, but in, in other places. And I think that's something that I think we really need to concentrate on. For people to have a common goal that Richmond Hill is our home and that we're going to live here, doesn't matter where you came from, it doesn't matter who you are, where, you know, what you're all about, that we're all, you know, pulling on the same rope in the same direction. And any initiatives that we can do that help that, I think are really- And any initiatives that we can do that help that, I think, are really important. I think we do need to be more compassionate towards each other and more understanding in in all that we do. And I think that's great. I really do appreciate the comment in that you said in your travels that this council is working together collaboratively more so than what you've seen. I totally agree with that and I'm really proud of us and the work that we've done and and the promise of what we can continue to do. And I think that's really great. The one other thing I would say, just in the time that I have left, is the the whole environment thing, that was a big deal in two thousand and nine. It was a big deal in the interim and it's a big deal now. And it needs to be something that remains a big deal. It's not just the parks that we own and the trails and so on that are important to people in our community, but it's the other green spaces and the protected lands in the green belt that need to continue to be protected as we go forward. And I think that's also, I believe, what people mean when they talk about that. And it is, it is a defining character of Richmond Hill and I think that is really, really important to us. And then the final thing I would just say, you know, I remember our late mayor, Dave Barrow, used to say all the time that, you know, in Richmond Hill, we're trying to build a city inside of a town. And I have always, that's always stuck with me because I think that's what we're trying to do here. And it's the whole idea of balancing the decisions that we have to make as we grow, but maintaining that kind of, I don't know, I'm not sure you want to call it small town, but but intimate flavor that we have here in Richmond Hill that I really do believe is also a defining characteristic of our community. So I'm over time, so I'll stop there, but I thank you for the work and I'm actually looking very much forward to the final document.
Hey, thank you, Mayor West. I have a speaker's list. First is Counselor Thompson.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also thank you for this report. This is quite an extensive report. I do have just a couple of quick questions that are more just for my own benefit because I wanted to make sure I understand the the whole engagement process. And you were talking about the pop-ups having the the biggest bang for the buck. And so the the event that Counselor Davidson and I attended at Elgin Barrow, would that be called a pop-up or would that that would be a workshop? What was that?
Through the chair, an open house, more of an open house, meeting, yeah.
And so that was probably one of the ones that did not provide a lot of success.
Correct. Yeah, we held two of those. We had a couple of those type of meetings, but then we also had the other pop-ups where we went out to existing facilities or events, so Hillcrest Mall, Canada Day, Concerts in the Park and Rib Fest was another one, the library. So those were what we call the pop-ups where we're going out to a space and it's quite informal. That was a more formal event that you were at, the open houses.
Right. So so at the open house, it appeared that the way you were collecting the data was all keystrokes based on what people were saying. So I take it we don't actually record and probably we're not allowed to, I would imagine. So is that the same thing at the pop-up? Somebody is just trying to click their fingers as fast as they can?
Yep, yep. We note take and collect the inputs and keep track of how many people attended those events. But, yeah, we're certainly not permitted to record. You know, we didn't record, for example, the interviews that we held with all of you or with staff. It's just people are not often as candid if they know that their feedback is going to be recorded. So we wanted to encourage an open and safe environment.
Right. And then the the surveys, I'm always concerned about surveys because if somebody has an agenda, they can get a bunch of people together and just start, you know, inundating, you know, their view on something. In reading the the summary report, and now this is just a comment, but I I noticed that I think staff are going to have their work cut out to come up with a final draft because what I see is a lot of conflicting information. And particularly, I'm looking at questions two and questions three. Question two said, from your perspective, where should the city focus its attention over the next five years? And one of the items that ranked very low on that list was to encourage a range of housing options, you know, such as the rentals and ownership, just as a means to improve access and affordability for all residents. And then when you go to the very next question, it says, is there one priority that stands out to you as being most important for the city to make progress on over the next few years? The number one was improve housing access and affordability for all residents. So, Lee, good luck to you and your group in getting that final draft together. Certainly looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davidson.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, and I thank staff and everyone involved. I know engagement, engaging the public is a real challenge these days because it's so fragmented how everyone gets their information and communicates. I was at the event that my counselor friend was talking about and it wasn't well attended, really. But it felt like sitting around the kitchen table with family. And it was, it it made such an imprint on me that this council is really trying to represent what people in the community want and they sincerely want it. They came out, the ones that did come out, it was an atmosphere of let's move together. It's not just I have a nice place to live, so what do I care? It was, it was impactful to me that it's a burden on us to carry through what the residents want and the residents want, all the things you mentioned and more. There's definitely things that we don't have power over because they're provincially driven. But I just want to encourage staff and residents to know this council is, I believe, open to ideas we haven't done before. I think now's the time to try new things. I think there are no limits on what should be suggested or considered. We can always say no. I know there's a bylaw review going on. Just because we haven't done things the way in the past doesn't mean we can't do them in the future. So I really hope, once we have the plan, that staff are encouraged to bring forth original and interesting and kind of edgy ideas if it's going to give us the community that our residents want. So I'm excited about the plan as daunting as it is, and I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shu.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I recognize the significant challenges faced by our planning staff as they prepare for the the next several years, considering the uncertainties surrounding our city, York region, or even the fiscal situation. I appreciate the planning staff for their great effort during these trying times. At the same time, I have two inputs and some comments. The first one is not in the presentation, which is electric car, electric vehicle, which is likely a trend in the coming years. From my observation, there are not enough parking spots with charges around our city. And we may need to work closely with the manufacturers to ensure a more seamless integration of electric vehicle infrastructure. That's the first one. And the next one is, according to the slide, slide number fifteen, one of our strengths is a safe and urban city with a small town feel, which is a very impressive idea for me. And this idea brings brings to mind this, this, the scratch of a young street between Major McAnancy and Algen Mills. The crucial question here is how we plan the location of the urban core and where the small town heritage should be preserved. For the past decades or two, the heritage style business community along Young Street has been a valuable asset. But the trend is subway is coming, high rises are coming, and more developments are moving north. So and we have to spare more space to accommodate the population growth. I do believe it's about time to consider if retaining a heritage style along Young Street remains a suitable choice. As they are getting busy and busier every day. Perhaps we should consider relocating it elsewhere or developing a brand-new heritage-style community business and environment. An ideal location would be near a big park like Mill Pond, like Town Park, Richmond Green, even in my word, in the David Hamilton Park, or even the Dido Park, near the Panholder somewhere. So we have considered what the Young Street will look like in the future because I don't think it's it's a suitable choice to to build a heritage-style business community there because it's too busy and a lot of high rises are coming in the future. So this will be a long run developing. And just a comment of this, that's all about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Stacy, right, consultant for the presentation. Of course, this manager here, and this is teamwork. I'm sure there's a lot of people stand behind you, sitting somewhere virtually and elsewhere. Thank you for doing that. It's never easy to go through organizational exercise, not only for this city. I think I've been participating one way or the other with numerous strategic planning exercises. So there's always things that really, that is, in our case, in particular, I like to highlight as good things that I've done. Now, Mr. Chair, I understand this is only focused on presentation, not specifically on the eleven point one we will talk about later, correct? I just want to, Mr. Chair. It's not specifically on the plan yet, but rather focus on the presentation, correct?
That's right.
Okay, good. So I reserve my other comments or questions later on when you get your lamp on one. So I just want to highlight the positive, the good things I see among a little experience I have with a good number of strategic planning exercises. The number is high, thirteen hundred. I mean, doing surveys that, yeah, sometimes it's concerned about, are these all self-selected responses? So you only hear what some of the people want you to hear. But notwithstanding that, that apply to any of your survey, that's a high number, so it's a big plus. And also, regardless of level of engagement or success or otherwise, the fact that the team go out to try different venues. In particular, I give lots of credits that do it in not just English, traditional and simplified Chinese, Farsi. And I I believe maybe in the future it could be other languages to extend that resources are there. I I think part of the thing is that in the process, I believe we also did focus group, correct? Okay, like to me, that would be also helps to not just saying where the community come together to to build an exceptional town, a city now and deliver excellent public service. I mean, that we have a chance to 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 really think about it. And I'm just thinking about that, is there any time they're saying we should revisit our mission statement? Because I don't seem to be seeing that. Maybe I missed it. So for you, Mr. Chair, for Stacy to respond, has anybody raised any, any issue on that topic?
I believe as part of it, and Lee, as you can remind me, but we elected not to include it because it was from two thousand and eight or nine. We didn't ask for feedback on the statement.
No, so our current vision and mission exists from the previously mentioned twenty ten, well, two thousand and nine, sorry. A strategic plan, we didn't ask people for specific feedback on it, but the intention here is to look at the the full breadth of what we received and then look at developing a new mission and vision, which will include consideration of what we've had in the past to see what we can do.
Okay, okay, because, thank you. Quite often, every organization does it differently. The ones that, the point I want to bring up is, I'm actually anticipating, see, based on all this extensive, multi-channel, multi-language consultation and feedback we're hearing, now is the time that we have an upbeat, positive, transformative mission statement. This is what the new city of Richmond Hill stands for versus, well, not say versus, that we moved from the twenty ten, right, which is a great statement, don't get me wrong. I'm not suggesting, but I'm just a little bit surprised, to be honest, that not touching that usually that I would see, okay, this is based on what we have heard, based on what our survey, what is the best practices, that's mission statement. And that's, I know it's a statement, but it guides the development of things that priorities and always focus on things we have control of, right? So I I just want to give the feedback on the presentation itself. And I have other comments and questions later on when we get to the beat of the report. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work. I know it's not easy. There's no perfect solution. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the work.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Chan. And yes, this committee will have opportunities to discuss details of our strategic plan. Lot, lots of opportunities going forward. So three more speakers, Counselor Sillett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much for this presentation. It's, it was superb, outstanding, and thank you to all our staff who have contributed so much work here. I, I don't have much to add other than I, I applaud my colleagues, my council colleagues for their comments. And I look forward to having the actual plan in our hands because that's what we're, that's what we're all strategically looking for. So thank you again, your work with us and no doubt with staff and and the community has been invaluable to the final product. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, and Counselor Tree.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, thank you so much, Stacy, and also these prepared us thoroughly surveying reports as well. I do have a few maybe comments here. I see a one slide named as the downtown core revitalization project. As I heard or in the past few months, talk of his residents, also business from that area, also including the addresses from where to cross our street. So that area, the majority concern is the first one is infrastructures. As we all know, the downtown core is only on the Young Street pieces, is only a two lines. And now, I know it's not managed by the city. I just want to echo, is there any potential changes or potential surveys we're going to be extended to York region? Because I'm assuming the infrastructure and that corner corridor might be a bottleneck in future. Look at our city, source side, we do have beautiful, also beautiful is a list, reasonable Young Street widening. But on the north side, that's going to be a battle for a lot of the traffic there. If you want to make a more recommendations or strategic plan, especially for that area, I would consider the infrastructure enhancement or improvement should be on our strategic plan. That's my thought. Okay, I'll just put it here. I think if the city wants to build up more traffic along Young Street, that problem we cannot prevent. We cannot, we have to consider in future, five years, maybe more rises living on the Young Street, that's going to be a problem. And also business growth there as well. So I don't know how much surveys we have done for that, but from my perspective, I heard a lot of confidence regarding to that area. That's just my first comment, so I don't want to answer because, no, this is not a city's decision. I think it may be region as well, but I would echo that why it should be considered in our plan. I don't want that to become a problem in our future. That's, I don't need, okay, thank you so much. I do have a second one regarding accessibilities. You might heard, we do have a lot of traffic problems and also we have a lot of modern new tools. For example, e-scooters, e-bikes, and that's adding another modern transportation for accessibilities, not only for seniors, but also for a lot of young generations. Regarding to that, I just want to echo another one as well. For shared multiple purpose uses road, is there any surveys can be done for there for multi uses purpose of the road for those new modern transportation tools?
The Counselor Tree, is your question, how are we engaging residents?
Yeah, that's right.
Or transportation?
Yes, it's part of accessibility, right? From my understanding is instead using the car driving to communities is Is any other concerns you see the modern tools, e-bike, e-scooters go there?
I think some of the feedback that Stacy highlighted that we heard had to do with obviously getting around the city, but active transportation and other new kinds of opportunities that are out there. I think trends in that area and based on the general feedback from the public is something that we would consider when we are writing the strategic plan. And also keep in mind that with a strategic plan, we can look at alignment to other plans that are emerging or realignment with what we're already doing. And so some of those more specific things would come as a result of the implementation of the strategic.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
And then, sorry, CEO wants to weigh in as well on this.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to add to Lee's Lee's comments, we are undertaking a transportation master plan at this point, and that will be presented by council, hopefully by the end of this year, and should be able to address some of those more specific things related transportation. The strategic planning process identifies what's important to the community and staff and council. And then, you know, we start to get into the weeds through the drafting of the implementation action plan that will come to council by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And finally, we have Counselor Liu.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to see the report and and thank you for all the efforts and, you know, even happier that there are no surprises. When I look at all twelve recommendations, I I'm really happy that, you know, I think council and staff have been doing that and we're on the right track, and congratulations. And but, you know, but I I I have a few comments and questions. So, you know, in regards to, you know, traffic congestion, I don't think anyone would disagree that, you know, is a is a huge problem. Not only in Richmond Hill, but it's everywhere. So but it's more on the region and the province. We don't have traffic congestion in the residential streets. So good luck to you. I don't know. I know there is a transportation master plan, but, you know, to address traffic congestion is 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 out of our control. And the other thing is I see on page thirty-two, the respondents, they express that only six point something percent that they they think that there are good job opportunities in Richmond Hill. I think that's alarming. I don't know if it's more on economic development part, or it, we should, you know, at least look into this. I think it's more on, you know, how do we attract businesses? How how do we increase more job opportunities? I think that's that's alarming. And the other thing, I'm surprised to see that, I don't see any mention about protecting our heritage. So is there any reason? Because I remember I might see that in previous strategic plan, but not in this one.
Yeah, I believe it is in the report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The longer report through the chair. Yes, absolutely. There is a desire to protect Richmond Hill's heritage, both heritage, you know, buildings, but also natural heritage assets as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all my comments and question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. So all eight of you have weighed in. That's fantastic. And all all I want to say is it's great that you've reached out to this many people, that you've got that response. It is challenging in Richmond Hill to to gather feedback. Our residents are very, very busy with their with family and work schedules. So the only thing I want to say is that I really hope as a result of this consultations that that the report is is viewed widely by our residents, that that comments begin to come in, that we have now about four weeks for our public to really, this is the chance and the and the time and the opportunity, if I'm speaking to members of the public, this is where if you you want to tell our council what your priorities are, now is the now is the time, and I really hope that engagement comes, and I hope I hope it's advertised widely and whatever it takes or whatever, whatever we need to do to make sure the residents are aware, this is their opportunity to weigh in on directing council towards its priorities and drafting this plan. So that that's all I had. So we have a motion on the floor and saying thank you very much for your for your work and and your presentation. So in item eleven point one, we have a staff recommendations, all in favor. Okay, any opposed? And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, eleven point two, that was pulled out by, I believe, Counselor Tree. Eleven point two, no, Deputy Mayor Chan, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. But actually, it's okay. We adopted motion eleven point one because when I was on, after presentation, I was asking a question, was that time to just give comment? Because I did say I reserve comments on eleven point one when we get to that time, Mr. Chair. I I got the answer that, yeah, it's time to comment on the presentation. It'll be because I was expecting to make comments and questions for eleven point one, but I guess now it's passed, but maybe I do it in offline now. But but my impression was that firstly was comment or question on the presentation, then we move to eleven point one. So I just wanted to absolutely clear, we finish with eleven point one, I need clarification and guidance, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, we definitely are. Eleven point one, it was an opportunity for questions. There's ample opportunity and council can continue to dialogue with staff, that your priorities be known. That's that's the thing. Nothing's stopping council from communicating their priorities through this process too.
Okay, but eleven point one is now finished. Okay. Okay, that's not too, that's not my understanding. That's why I I did ask specifically before I made comments early on, now's the time for comments or presentation. I did say at the end, and you can play the video, I believe I did say, I reserve my comments and questions when I just can discuss eleven point one. That's why I did not touch on transportation. I did not touch on heritage. I did not touch on the the local village area, but it's fine.
Thank you for doing that. This meeting is not the opportunity to discuss.
Okay, that's fine.
Details.
Fair enough.
I meant at a later meeting at another time and another date. And then I I see that you thought I meant after.
That's okay, fine. But I, but in my making that statements, I make it very clear. There's another time to ask those question of comment other things.
You will have lots of more further opportunities before this council approves this.
Of course. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be sure. Because, yes, council meeting next week, we have opportunity to do that. But in my mind and as I express it, that's my approach. That doesn't seem to fit that way. That's okay. Now on eleven point two, then I put that one. I have no issue in terms of recommendation on page one report. Basically, it's receive for information. So that's my issue. However, I do have a question for Mr. Chair, particular on item eleven. This is getting to more topical, more and more that we talk about housing, housing affordability, housing supply, and successive level government, federal, provincial, even originally talk about it, is that municipalities can do as much as streamline, improve upon the approval process, shorten time period. But at the end of day, it's the builders who are actually in control, whether they want to break the ground or not. So on item eleven, I I I was hoping to, at the time, introduce a motion to to consider adding a sunset clause on any future approval or planning. I would like to see if Mr. Chair, perhaps, I don't know whether it's a city manager or planning would be able to respond to it, unlike some other items which I'd like to see is on the very right column. It's a date when it's coming back. Like, for example, on the item number ten, is it will be coming back on council about a week from now. But on this particular one, I thought is really topical. We need to have some sense of whether in fact in Richmond Hill, we mean what this is that to also put some accountability, so to speak, on incentive for the builders to really put the shovel underground. So even if the city be the target, if the show is not underground, we are not meeting anything. So through you, Mr. Chair, perhaps it's to either city manager or planning representative, all I see is pending versus sometimes we say in progress. So I would like to understand, through you, Mr. Chair, from planning, where are we? Is there any target date? Or is it going to be reviewed along with other things? So what's pending means, through you, Mr. Chair?
So any any more information on item eleven regarding its status? Mr. Glanis?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is an item that's been on our to-do list. Staff is in the process of benchmarking and getting background information at this time, and it is our intention to come back to council with a report and request for direction by the end of this year.
By the end of this year. Okay, at least now I guess I'm timing. So thank you. As I said, Mr. Chair, I already moved a motion on page one. That one I was very clear, we see for information only. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion for the staff recommendations on item eleven point two, and I I just want to thank our staff for the transparency. This, the the fact that these items are listed for us, and this is this is something that serves us really well, so we know where where things stand, and we can ask questions on the status of pending items. So all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Great, carries unanimously. Okay, now we had eleven, item eleven point six, pulled out by Counselor Xu. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I would like to give a big shout out to former former World Six Councilor Gobin Chan for moving this motion. And Counselor Sinivas was the second to beg it up, to move this development forward. I'm so excited about the idea of our future neighbors in this area getting a taste of urban-style city life. But I've still got some concerns too here. One thing that has been on my mind is traffic and transportation. As the future terminal for the Yang North subway extension is set to be at Yang High Tech Row, that means neighbors in this area have to rely on some form of shuttle transit to reach the station, or they have to drive themselves. While we are all about promoting public transit, so I'm just wondering, do we have I have a question here. Do we have a transportation plan in place to make sure everyone can easily connect to the subway and the transportation hub? That's very, that's very crucial question.
I think it was mentioned in the earlier item, that the transportation study is underway, that 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 plan will be coming forward later this year in the spring, Counsel?
Just. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the transportation master plan will be coming forward to council by the end of this year. But I don't know if Mr. Galanis wants to add any comments specific to this area.
Through you, Mayor, through you, Mr. Chair. We are working, or we have been working with the applicant to discuss various aspects of this development proposal, including transportation, but specifically a shuttle or that type of facility going to the transit station, I don't believe has been brought forward. And I can see Manager Di Maria is confirming that. It has not been brought forward at this time, but certainly we can take that comment forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Through the Chair, I have a second question. At the same time, it's not realistic to assume that all residents living upstairs will rely only on public transit, especially when their destination are not served by public transit. That's why we have over six hundred residential parking spots for over a thousand households in the buildings. There's more than half in total. That means the residents will still depend on their own vehicles to some extent. So ensuring smooth road traffic remains crucial. Now, my second question is, is there any plan in place to widen Yang Street in sixteen Avenue to accommodate the shop increase in competition size in the future?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To the best of my knowledge, there are no plans to widen Young Street at this time. The region worked very diligently to come up with the BRT system and the existing configuration of Young Street, but at this time, there are no plans to further widen it.
Okay, I I believe is it is essential for the completion date of the Yang North subway extension and and the nearby condo building to align closely. This way, we can prevent the road traffic from turning into a nightmare before the subway transit becomes operational. So do do we have any completion date for this development? Proposed date for completion?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, are you, you're speaking for the completion date of the specific development that's before you?
Yes.
Again, through you, Mr. Chair. No, we don't have any completion date at this time. We're we're in the process right now of taking the matter forward. They've appealed the matter to the OLT, and it'll really come down to what form of the development will take. It's really up to the developer in terms of timing.
Okay, so and another comment, based on the revised plan now, there will be thirty-eight retail stores going to serve over a thousand household living upstairs. In my opinion, there's not enough to meet the needs. Only thirty-eight retail store to serve over a thousand household upstairs. I do believe one of the best ways to 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 relieve the nearby road traffic is by promoting live there, shop there approach. So in my opinion, a a a commercial residential mixed-use condo should aim to provide all essential amenities within the same building, including grocery stalls, supermarkets, clinics, pharmacies, banks. All the necessities are all include among the thirty-eight retail store, I would consider is an ideal seller for residents and a potential role model for the future mixed-use high-rises development. That's my opinion. I know there are some high-rises condo nearby that can only attract certain kinds of businesses like clinics and dental office. There are a lot of dental office and clinics just just on the commercial zone or section.
Counselor Xu, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding how your comments are are relevant to what's what's proposed here. We're directing our staff. They're at the OLT hearing.
So I just wanted, I just want to ask a question. Do you know any any install in will be included in the thirty-eight retail stores? Because that's my ideas.
It's interesting you ask that question. This this particular site is going to to be a, you know, an extensive retail complex. You know, this is this is just an application for three buildings, but it's a twenty-three acre site where the expectation is to have a complex of retail and you know, commercial components to, you know, it's going to be, I I've seen a a larger vision that they have, they've come to the city as a step one to get get a decision on these these two three buildings. Mr. Glanis, you have something to add there?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to confirm exactly what you're saying, there's a greater vision for the site as a whole. It's intended to be a mixed-use, livable, walkable community, and it will have commercial uses at grade. Even this proposal, as it's come forward, will include that at grade, and they're visioning that across their whole site. That's their proposal.
Thank you. Yeah, more so than anywhere else. This this particular site will be one that your residents will will have a lot of a lot of the amenities, the things that they need right within that that quadrant without even having to cross Young or anything else.
So can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
One last one, this about this concern about the the trend of electric vehicle. So according to the plan, there will be over eight hundred. One minute more, okay. Do you have any plan in place to 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 put some sports for electric vehicles with the charges, the parking sports?
Mr. Glanis?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Again, we are not at the point right now where we've gotten to that level of detail, but that's certainly something that the city always looks for in terms of providing that capacity. We see the emerging trends with respect to electric vehicles, and it's something that would be discussed at the site plan stage. But really, we're talking about now the the larger order here, which is the official plan and the zoning bylaw. That's really what's in front of council today.
Thank you. Maybe it's another good time in the right place here to ask, and I will ask later, okay? For for this project, I would like to refer back to the staff. and for for this project I would like to refer back to the staff yeah I will go yeah there's no problem for me now
well you're not comfortable with this the recommendations I I will go to next to deputy mayor Chan uh go ahead we do need a motion on the floor
right Mr Chair thank you and I appreciate conscious show as the local what's his country now at those questions uh yeah it's more to come I'm sure as a uh planning acting commissioner saying um I'd like to move the motion because um it's very uh clear the staff was saying and we all know the actual deciding authority is not with as much I'd like to be in the city of Richmond council chamber is actually on on town land trial bino so our staff is asking us at Richmond Hill to give direction that recommendation A is that uh Richmond Hill uh through our staff and I would be um informing them on O L O L T which does not support this particular revised uh application um and uh Mr Kirk could help uh there's also component B and C so B is important because once a committee recommend to council to make the direction to oppose and do not support uh they could prepare uh about the uh whatever document statements and of course uh we always like to have an audit branch uh somewhere and working uh hopefully with the applicant perhaps um that would be some kind of settlement or resolution outstanding issues uh so that's my motion on table uh and um yes it's lots of things that we can talk about and discuss on this project along only comment I would say um initially is for eight hundred twenty one units but now they propose revise I should say is go up uh by uh more than two hundred twenty six units to over a thousand so uh I think that uh in a way that council shoe and and uh talking about in concern we talk about transportation those are something certain our staff doing consideration in uh opposing this particular uh revise application so that's my motion uh then uh so our staff could get direction repair and um I'll leave it as that Mr Chair thank you
thank you uh deputy mayor mayor west you're next
I I don't really have a lot to add I just wanted to clarify the the initial comments so this this motion that we're dealing with right now is to deny this application and are this settlement offer which is not what we're looking for there's a whole bunch of issues outlined in the staff report that you know we're not comfortable with or staff start comfortable with right now from a planning perspective but I get the the larger issue is that you know that this whole area will evolve into something very very different than what it is right now but you know we we can't be approving um more height and density in that area than the area can um handle and I think that's really what councillor shoe is really you know the thing that's concerning him as local councillor is probably keeping him up at night um as as you know I'm sure it is with all of us I just wanted to add one small thing I if I am not mistaken is somewhere in that master plan there is a a reserved area within the the larger area context for the subway to to be at some point in time so I mean the subway you know we're we're hoping to get it to uh high tech as quickly as possible but there are plans at the region um to have it extended at some point uh further north to uh to this area as well so you know we're planning it for now but we're also planning it for the future but this uh proposal that's in front of us right now at O L T is not what we're looking for and so that's the rationale that I would be using I think the rest of council will be using to uh send it back to O L T to uh you know a plead our case with O L T that this is not going to fit as well into the community as we need it to fit into the community so anyway that that would be my comments
hey thank you uh councillor Silvitz you want to speak or you were just looking to move the motion
thank you no I fully support the motion on the floor and the staff recommendations uh thank you Mr Chair I think if if you read C of the recommendation it says that city staff be directed continue discussions with the applicant board resolution of the outstanding appeals and the submission of a revised development proposal that is supportable and represents good planning that is what we that is what we strive for is what's before us right now does not represent that so I fully I fully uh fully supports uh going to the O L T yeah thank you
okay thank you very much so uh everyone who wanted to speak has had a chance uh I do support those recommendations as well for that very reason um we're we're directing our staff to continue discussions with this applicant and uh you know I'm really hopeful that um our 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 staff can get the get some concessions made by the applicant and get us back here this is this has happened a number of times our last couple of approvals have 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 been as a result of our staff negotiating with an applicant and then coming to council and and very successfully uh you know re- reducing harmful densities and you know changing aspects of the of the plan and making an applicant making some concessions and I really hopeful that it comes back and that we do have the opportunity it it's a shame that uh you know uh you know that because of the timing and I I don't necessarily think it's that are that is because of the timing that our staff was slow to engage I think the applicant just reserves their right to an appeal and you know I agree with the stance in this current iteration that uh that we oppose this application um for for the reasons cited he if what's currently in in front of the O L T um but hopefully there 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 can be some concessions made but overall uh this is our key development area and this is uh this is where we've identified growth to be this is where potentially as the mayor said uh observatory station will be the next stop on the on the subway it it is definitely planned to be at at sixteenth the station at at least and then perhaps beyond but there's no question it's going to be easy to get uh that proper public transit with what we already have on Young Street is for all the reasons we made this area K D A uh this is where density belongs by putting density here we we helped to save our green spaces and um the the mixed use overall that's being proposed this will be like like an like an outdoor mall uh with incredible retail opportunities a very modern project and something that we can look forward to but um well I mean I'm just hopeful that our staff and this app can come together on on the on the issues in this application that that are caused cause for concern so I support the motion on the floor um I don't see any other members that want to speak so all in favor of the recommendation any opposed again carries unanimously thank you committee and um the next two items are member motions brought forward by Mayor West we'll go forward with the first one Mayor West I want to properly introduce your member motion is uh regarding gender based and intimate partner violence epidemic go ahead
okay thank you uh Mr Chair and um I I just I'll say just once for for that will include both of the motions that we're going to be dealing with right now that both of these motions are motions that came out of the Ontario big city mayor caucus meeting at the association municipalities of Ontario uh conference both of which I uh firmly supported at O B C M but but both of these are uh being requested by O uh O B Ontario big city mayors uh caucus to bring to our local councils and get endorsement from them uh and if I am not mistaken at well the first one anyway is being brought forward presently to the York region council and I I suspect that we'll be uh passing that um shortly but the first uh member motion it is related to gender based and intimate partner violence and um there's already been a number of municipalities um that have endorsed motions like this and put out a call for further support to higher levels of government to help us as municipalities address this uh particular problem uh I I've I've been involved with a couple of organizations in my uh previous life uh one of which was yellow brick house and I have to tell you the um the the situations that that yellow brick house is just a women's shelter uh based out of here in Richmond Hill have been dealing with for years it's really horrifying and it's not something that I was very aware of before I started doing some volunteer work with them uh but the over the the time of the pandemic I I know that I've been speaking to yellow brick house and 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 Sandgate as well and there's been no question that there's been an uptick in the number of incidences of uh gender based uh domestic violence assault and and so on and it really is a becoming it's always been a very very significant problem but it's becoming from a quantity uh perspective something that I think we really need to to take appropriate action both of this those organizations and a number of other organizations in our community support uh women and men uh escaping um bad situations in their home life and um I think this is something that this council um would want to be able to uh support um there's I won't go into all of the details of this but I think um you know we are going to need as as individual municipalities uh the support and and help from other levels of government and um changes to the criminal code potentially that this uh motion is asking for in order to better address uh that type of problem so I'd ask for everybody's support on this um the one part about the way it was presented in the um agenda that I I've neglected to do was put a part in there to send it uh our resolution out to the various interested parties uh so that they know what our position is in Richmond Hill and when I move this motion in a second we'll add um that part of it as well so uh anyway thank you very much for allowing me to present that and I am on my for myself but and this council but also on behalf of the Ontario big city mayors as well
thank you Mayor West so you're moving the motion with an addition of we'll have the clerk bring it on the screen and oh the clerks already
yeah it's essentially just to uh to send this to the premier of Ontario minister miss milk bears and housing and and a number of others including um O B C M and uh and Marco which is the regional uh version of Ontario big city mayors
uh councillor Silvitz
thank you Mr Chair and um thank you uh Mayor West for bringing this forward fully supported um if you need a second I'm there uh for both of them especially the second one I think that um these are uh these are two very very important member motions and um I I really am very proud uh to be seated on this council knowing that we are moving this we will hopefully be moving this forward and I I I ask that my council colleagues uh unanimously support both these motions thank you
thank you okay uh councillor Davidson
thank you through you Mr Chair I fully support this as well I I hope this motion and I don't know if this is a place to ask but as a councillor I would really love the opportunity to learn what I can do if I hear something or I neighbors come to me about issues I hope part of this will include a wider education for the entire community on how we can support people who are are the victim of violence um maybe this isn't the right time to say that but it sparked that thought thank you
gonna go to the mover with your question
that's actually an excellent point and I appreciate you bringing that up um just to share maybe some some suggestion both in Richmond Hill uh Sandgate and uh yellow brick house are are to the go tos and there's others as well but you know um I know that both of those organizations have come to council to do flag raisings and so on and and it is a great opportunity I think for them to get to know us on council and I've been trying to amplify their message for many years and uh and I know that we all have a you know a role to play as council to to help organizations like that to to some degree but I I would I could be more than happy to put you in touch with any of the people that I that I've learned a lot from over the years and uh and you know that would be a good thing for our community as well
okay thank you okay so um yes I also support the motion wholeheartedly uh at the region we had a presentation uh from another organization that that deals with this and and helps women and uh escaping domestic violence uh you mentioned Sandgate and yellow brick house there's also abuse hurts where it works throughout your York region um serves Richmond Hill as well and um that was it the charity that I fundraised for the last two years and in in uh at my events they they did some information sessions on on uh the the nature of the problem the fact that it's escalated during covid and this is you know reaching epidemic levels this appropriate motions coming from um the big city mayors but um it was also also discussed at the region and I think it may have always been a problem but um perhaps uh because of these organizations uh to some extent who um women are now empowered to to come forward and that's that's what we want and and all the other suggestions in this motion are are good and anything we can do to 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 support anyone suffering from uh domestic violence the deputy mayor Chan you want to weigh in too
uh thank you um thank you very much uh Mr Mayor for bringing forward the motion uh as Mr Chair said uh the top the item is also um raised at York regional council uh as well um I want to also uh share and actually is in the west uh where the Federation can municipalities in which I a board member on that is also an issue that has been uh uh raised and also declaration as mentioned in here um so I'm in full support and some of the numbers or that is uh I have seen is staggering in particular since um the onset of uh covid uh well you can imagine because for quite a while that people asked to stay home were asked to stay home and unfortunately that might have something to do with the increase in numbers I mean for support uh for the motion in front of us and I agree that number seven is important not just Richmond Hill chamber or Richmond Hill but um all levels of government um and the yeah any parties who are working on this issue thank you Mr Chair I will be in full support with the motion
okay thank you so all in favor of the motion on the floor any opposed and that carries unanimously okay go ahead Mr West
okay
from here Wes
okay no Mr West is good uh I uh although that's my dad actually uh okay so the second one again has come from O B C M I won't repeat all of that um but it's also so this uh council a while ago uh put put its support behind uh what was at the time a uh private members bill bill five stopping harassment and abuse by local leaders act two thousand and twenty two uh we unanimously approved that but we it didn't end up getting passed in the Ontario provincial legislature uh it died so the uh what what I'm asking here is I I really do believe that that making sure that councils are acting in a respectable respectful and uh you know a non bullying way in all that we do uh is really important and it's important to us and it's important across Ontario and I know that you know we've had uh situations in the past which you know troubled me but I would say that through my time um as mayor and my talking to other uh colleagues from different municipalities across Ontario this is not only a problem uh in Richmond Hill and and in any given municipality it's it's a problem in other municipalities as well and the the legislation around how to deal with um uh behavior from council members that's not appropriate and not in keeping uh with with what you'd expect in in any normal workplace and is not acceptable with regard to our uh all of our um codes of conduct in different municipalities is just not acceptable um it's a complex issue I will I will admit but um you know we we need as councillors to be taking our role seriously as leaders in our community and we need to be acting in an appropriate way in all that we do and uh right now I don't believe that the current legislation um around uh codes of conduct and council behavior is strong enough and it really does need a a redo uh the provincial government I have heard has committed to bringing forward their own initiative instead of this the bill five that was defeated but uh it seems to be a long time coming and I think that this is a positive way for us as a council uh to be putting forth a message to the provincial government to say that this is a priority it's a priority for us on Richmond Hill it's a priority for councils across Ontario and we need to get going and make it a priority at the the provincial government because ultimately it's the provincial legislation that um will frame and largely control um will frame and largely control what we can and can't do as municipalities around this this topic. So um I would like this to be done uh and and passed unanimously with uh this council's support. Uh there are other municipalities uh across Ontario that are are passing similar motions as there were uh with the previous motion with Bill Five, but I think we really need to keep the pressure on. Um and and we'll go from there. So thank you for uh allowing me the opportunity to do this, and and I ask for all of my colleagues' support on this.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Okay, I've got a speaker's list. Uh Deputy Mayor Chan?
Thank you very much. Um yes, uh this is a motion that I support strongly. Uh and also would like to share uh for some of us who were actually at the Conference of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Um ministers were of the Ontario Government were asked uh about this uh Bill Five that uh because uh it died, uh it's a, as a mayor just said. And I have to say um that, well, I don't think it's any disclosure of any things I shouldn't say, but if it is, maybe a lawyer would advise me. It was, it was following that question is almost like most if not all, a tender standing ovation for somebody asking that question. Um that um and 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 basically um I can, I can base on that particular observation that this is not just a small number municipalities who would like the Ontario Government do something along the path of Bill Five. It is really overwhelming, if I may say, um I venture to say overwhelming um uh interest and level of support in having points of government to have um things relating to um municipal um call um in this case, strength of the call conduct, uh because there have been incidents, including, uh I believe even um case in some other places, certainly not to talk about here. So action is needed, no doubt about it. And the more municipalities are passing motions like this, what mayor has just um uh moved. And I think to send a strong message to Ontario Government. We at the municipal level are united in seeking provincial government to act on this. And so I'm in full support. Thank you.
Okay, uh thank you. Uh and Counselor Silvitz?
Oh, thank you, Mister Chair, and um thank you again to Mayor West for bringing this forward. Uh uh Counselor Chan, uh Deputy Mayor Counselor Chan, thank you for your comments. Um just to uh just to piggyback on what Deputy Mayor Chan was saying, not only was it a standing ovation, but it was a sustained standing ovation. It was quite remarkable. Um I've never really seen that before at at an A M O conference or any other conference. So um and lots of whooping and, you know, uh lots of lots of noise from those, all of those who were standing. And um I I really hope that the provincial government takes note of that and that they really do something uh to ensure that um that behavior such as what has been described is completely unacceptable anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, I I see everyone has spoken who wanted to. Um just want to say also that I I really I support this. Um and it is, I I know that right across Ontario, it's something that's being called for. Um the the Ministry of Municipal Affairs is is grappling with it, but intends to make some action, but we need to be on record that uh we we want this to happen. I'm a little bit concerned about um the request in the motion to have an upon recommendation of integrity commissioners of a removal of of a councillor. Uh it it the 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 problem, we need really good enforcement, good penalties. Uh we need to insist on 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 a proper court of conduct and 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 really um really punish bad actors. I I think that that has to happen. Uh but then then the but to me, the electorate is supreme, and and it should be should be their choice and their decision at election time. Um who who represents them and we just there's just certain scenarios where um a a gang on council could manipulate the integrity commissioner process, because council hires the integrity commissioner. Then then here comes this this recommendation for then council is voting off. Uh I don't believe councils should ever have the ability to vote people off of the island, off of council. Uh I, because it's potential abuse, and assuming there's all good actors, everything's okay. But when you do get bad actors, that could be problematic. Uh it's it's not enough of a concern. I I I support the motion. Uh as it is, we leave it up to municipal affairs to see what they do with it. Uh it needs to happen, not for here, of course. We've all taken an integrity pledge, and we don't have any problems, but for the rest of Ontario. Thank you. Okay, so all in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Very, very good. Thanks, committee. Uh does anyone have an emergency or time-sensitive matter? Um is anyone willing to to uh move us into closed session? We do have a closed session item. Can I get a motion to go into closed session? Okay, 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 then I need a motion for adjournment. Uh and Counselor David Davidson is moving that. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Anyone want to stay here? No, okay, that's carries unanimously also. I call it, I call the meeting adjourned. And I pass it over to Mayor West, right? It's to to counsel in camera.